All right. Today is April fifteenth. This is the regular council meeting. I'd like to call it to order. Can I get a roll call from the clerk?
Mayor Potemblis.
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming.
Here.
Councilman Mier.
Here.
Councilor Robach.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Councilor Wright.
Here.
Mayor Graffstein.
Could I get a motion to excuse Mayor Graffstein?
So moved.
Motion from Councilor Robach. Can I get a second?
Support.
Support from Councilman Mier? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, tonight's invocation and pledge of allegiance will be given by Councilman Fleming. Please stand if you are able.
Heavenly Father, we come today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's start things off with the presentation from the police chief on National Telecommunicators Week Proclamation.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize our fine dispatchers from the city of Madison Heights. And on behalf of the Police Department, I have PSA Trish, who is going to accept the proclamation. Do you have the proclamation with you?
We do. It is one of these two envelopes. This one? You want to read it?
If you'd like to read it, go ahead.
Sure. Whereas the number 911 is universally recognized as being dedicated to report emergencies, and whereas the telecommunicator response to calls for help gives the residents of Madison Heights a quick response to emergency calls for police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas the safety of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the actions of the telecommunicator and the quality and accuracy of the information obtained by citizens who contact 911; and whereas the telecommunicator serves as the first initial responder and the voice of help, providing direction and comfort for those in crisis to rely on when they call 911; and whereas 911 telecommunicators play a critical role with their public safety partners above and beyond the normal call of duty. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Madison Heights declares this week National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Madison Heights in honor of the men and women whose exceptional dedication and professionalism put forth in contributing to making Madison Heights a safer place to live, work, and visit.
Thank you. And again, on behalf of the Police Department, I have PSA Christine Trish, who is going to accept the proclamation.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll do the second one from you, chief. The National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week Proclamation.
Yes, sir. If you'd like to read it, and I'll introduce.
Happy to.
Thanks.
All right. Whereas when a call for animal control services is requested, the prompt response of the animal control officer is very important for the protection of human life and the welfare of helpless animals and pets that are rescued from injury, harm, and inhumane treatment. And whereas our animal control officer provides a number of services to this community, including responding to domestic animal calls and complaints, checking on the welfare of pets, inspecting pet stores and other animal facilities, catching and returning loose pets, ensuring that pets are properly vaccinated and licensed, investigating complaints of animal bites, responding to calls on wildlife, and moving wildlife to other locations for their safety; and whereas our animal control officer is a hardworking member of the Madison Heights Police Department and is dedicated to the service of animal control needs in the community. And whereas this week of appreciation recognizes and honors ACO Paige Wallace and part-time animal shelter assistance Angela Benner and Christine Ferguson Reguso, now therefore let it be resolved that the City Council of Madison Heights declares this week National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week.
Thank you, Mayor Potemblis. Paige Wallace.
All right. Thank you to everyone who is serving, taking those 911 calls, and making sure the animals in our city are safe, well-protected, and well-taken care of. I, in my haste, I forgot to go to add something to the agenda, so I'd like to request a motion to add the item for funded senior home chore and yard services contract with Capital Landscapes under bids and purchases. Item number ten on the agenda.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda under item ten, as read.
Perfect. Motion by Councilor Wright. Can I get a second?
Your Honor, a second.
Second by Councilor Robach. Any discussion? All in favor of adding this to the agenda under bids and purchases, item number ten? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Now, we have a report from our city manager and finance director on the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget. It is why all of our department heads are crammed into that corner like sardines. And I've been assured that this presentation is only twenty minutes long.
I'll talk fast. So tonight, I'm pleased to present the proposed budget to the City Council and the public. I would like to acknowledge the outstanding efforts of Finance Director Linda Coonath and Assistant to the City Manager Harley Mordarsky, as well as all of the department heads and staff for their excellent effort in preparing a budget that reflects our commitment to community priorities, maintains existing services, implements the capital improvement plan, and continues to honor our city's strategic plan. I would also like to thank the mayor and city council for their leadership and support in planning the city's financial operations responsibly and progressively. This budget is a product of our collective efforts, and it brings success to our community. In our budget presentation today, we plan to spend a few minutes discussing the guiding principles used to develop this budget. We will provide a fiscal year 2026 budget overview, discuss the strategic plan, budget constraints, and how that aligns with the proposed budget and fund balance and fees. Following this detailed discussion, we will briefly touch on other funds, including the Water and Sewer Fund and proposed rate increases. The proposed budget is presented in accordance with a detailed calendar that is contained in the policy document. Last fall, the annual budget process formally began with the review of the long-range financial outlook and the capital improvement plan, which were presented to City Council and subsequently adopted on January the thirteenth. These plans set the future year's priorities in preparation for the operating budget, which began in December, all leading to the proposed budget that we are reviewing for you tonight. This proposed budget was posted online and submitted to the City Council on April the third. The remaining highlights of the budget calendar includes tonight's City Council budget presentation, and then the adoption and budget and tax levy scheduled to take place at the council meeting on May the twelfth, which is the second Monday in May. Now Linda will present the budget overview and the budget guiding principles.
The proposed fiscal year 2026 budget reflects our continued commitment to maintaining high-quality services while adapting to financial constraints. With revenue challenges stemming from tax rollbacks, declining federal and state funding, and rising costs, we had to make some difficult decisions to keep the budget balanced. The total proposed budget for fiscal year 2026 is $66.1 million, with the general fund allocation set at $42.3 million. This represents a decrease of $392,383 compared to the adopted fiscal year 2025 budget, excluding carryforwards and budget amendments. The primary factors contributing to this reduction are the elimination of four full-time positions and decrease in planned capital expenditures. Of the $66.1 million, $8.8 million is capital outlay. This includes assets such as vehicles, equipment, building maintenance, and infrastructure such as roads, rehabilitation and construction, and water and sewer line replacements. As you can see from these charts, our largest revenue is still property taxes, and our largest expense is personnel services. Although the city had the ability to levy $25.6063 mils, this proposed budget is supported by a tax rate of $25.4572 mils for fiscal year 2026. This proposed rate is the same rate as fiscal year 2025. The city is nearing our maximum operating tax levy authorization with only .166 capacity, and we must prepare for budget constraints. While we continue to manage resources carefully, the long-term financial outlook will require thoughtful decisions about potential millages to ensure we can maintain the services, infrastructure, and public safety investments that make Madison Heights a great place to live and work. There is a projected limited revenue growth of $431,847 across all funds. This growth is driven by a state tax commission inflation rate multiplier of 3.1% offset by a millage rollback of approximately 1.73% and reduction in federal and state revenue, court revenues, and miscellaneous revenues. The city's taxable value for fiscal year 2026 is now 97% of what it was in fiscal year 2008. However, we continue to face significant expenditure pressures as inflationary increases across all service areas, which far exceed the 3.1% inflation multiplier. Therefore, the overall budget focuses on following the strategic plan for moving the city forward by implementing projects that address long-term maintenance issues and align with the city council's long-term vision. This chart shows the city's tax distribution for the 10,339 single-family homes and condominiums in Madison Heights. For fiscal year 2026, the average home market value is $225,757, with a taxable value of $59,758 and an average tax bill of $1,521.27 for city services. The city-like businesses and residents that call Madison Heights home have continued to feel pressure on expenditures due to inflationary increases. While many expenditure areas have returned traditional increases of 2% to 3%, we experience wage pressures to remain competitive in the region, especially with public safety departments. This is reflected in the proposed budget based on wage reopeners and extensions for all union contracts. This budget eliminates four vacant positions and denied department requests for additional staff, opting to increase part-time hours to support the full-time staff's activities. And I'm going to turn over the presentation to Melissa.
In December, the city council and staff met to review and update the strategic plan. One significant change was to combine the focus area of sustainability within each category. These plans take into account the need of everyone who lives, works, and visits Madison Heights with a focus on building a solid tax base to support a strong community and superior services. Now in year seven of this process, we continue to follow this path. The key priority areas guiding our work continue to be public safety, infrastructure and capital assets, quality of life, economic development, and financial stability. The next few slides focus on how the fiscal year 2026 budget aligns with council's direction through the strategic plan. Public safety continues to be our number-one priority in our strategic plan and is supported by a range of initiatives. To start, the proposed budget includes the addition of a second school resource officer for the 2025-26 school year in partnership with Lambier Schools. This position will be jointly funded, 70% by the district and 30% by the city, for a total cost of $182,000, including benefits. Moreover, the co-responder program will continue in fiscal year 2026 with existing grant funding. Although we will continue to seek grant funding, full city funding is anticipated to begin in fiscal year 2027. While no expansion in this program is budgeted this year, the continuation of this program reflects our commitment to addressing behavioral health through collaborative response efforts. The budget also proposes targeted IT upgrades. This includes firewall replacement and phase two of a citywide phone system upgrade, both critical in ensuring secure and reliable communication infrastructure for emergency services and protection against cybersecurity threats. Our refuse collection program also plays a vital role in maintaining a clean and safe community. With the current contract with priority waste set to expire in June, staff was evaluating both the existing service level and a cart-only model, which offers operational efficiencies and reduces expenses. The fiscal year 2026 budget includes funding equal to fiscal year 2025 at $1.8 million. We have conducted several community engagement sessions and have very favorable feedback regarding moving to a cart-only system, coupled with a new cart program. This would only increase our cost expenditures by $53,000 a year, as opposed to $200,000 a year with existing service. Once city council has had a chance to review all the details and made a decision, a budget amendment will be required for the service. Finally, traffic safety enhancements, including pavement strapping and pedestrian upgrades on John R., are incorporated in the John R. overlay project, reinforcing our ongoing efforts to improve mobility and safety for all users of the road. Infrastructure is another main focus in our strategic plan, and this proposed budget reflects key updates across several areas. At Fire Station Number One, phase two of the roof replacement project had to be deferred, resulting in a $220,000 reduction in the fiscal year 2026 budget. While this work is still a priority, we've submitted a state enhancement grant application to support this project, and we anticipate learning the outcome of our submission this fall. If successful, that external funding would help move the project forward without impacting the general fund. On our streets, the budget includes a combined $1.9 million for major and local road improvements. This includes $150,000 for the city's share of the tri-party John R. overlay project between 12.5 and 14 Mile, which is scheduled to begin this June. In addition, we've allocated $800,000 for the next phase of John R. overlay, spanning from 11 Mile to 12.5 Mile, with work expected to begin next spring. Finally, we continue to invest heavily in our underground infrastructure, with $2.5 million budgeted for water and sewer capital outlay, including service line replacements. These investments help us ensure safe, reliable service and reduce long-term maintenance cost. The city is in the beginning processes of updating our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which will guide the future capital investments in parks and recreation programming. In the interim, the budget continues to fund for Rosie Park upgrades, including a new pavilion, field rehabilitation, hardball and softball field rehabilitation, and the refurbishment of the Gardenia parking lot. The recreation budget also includes funding for community engagement, intended to expand facility use for programming, such as shared spaces with school districts or partnerships with private organizations to offer access to facilities such as gyms, tennis courts, and programming. We've also continued to fund $50,000 a year for special project funding. Since these funds have been added to the budget, we have utilized these for grant matches to bring programs such as the band shell, pickleball courts, and new play structures to city parks. The library budget includes ongoing funding for Makerspace and the Library of Things. Also new in this budget is a citywide informational quarterly newspaper insert, which will focus on city updates, news, and department services. The cost should partially be offset by a reduction in the pages of the recreation brochure, which will now focus primarily on recreation programming of events. Tree plantings continue to be included at $27,000. And in addition, we have applied for a citywide tree inventory and planting grant for 150 trees, which will not be added to the budget until awarded and does not require city funding. The food composting drop-off program has been very successful and is included to continue in the budget at $3,000. I'm now going to turn the presentation back over to Linda.
The city has long maintained a strong reputation for sound financial policies, which have been further enhanced through strategic planning and multi-year budgeting. Since 2007, the budget process has highlighted the city's significant financial challenges with legacy cost of pension and retiree healthcare. With changes made to benefit levels in 2021, the retiree healthcare trusts are both now fully funded. However, we still struggle with funding the pension systems. The general employees' pension system is closed, however, the police and fire system remains open to new hires. Since 2021, the city has made additional contributions to improve funding for the police and fire pension, which is now currently 60% funded. The fiscal year 2026 budget continues to include additional contributions above the required annual amount, with a total amount proposed at $7.7 million, $3.4 million for the fire department, and $4.3 million for the police department, supported by the police and fire millage. This is a $4 million above the actuarially required contribution, which will continue to raise the funding level above 60%. As of June 30, 2024, the reserved but assigned fund balance for general fund stood at $15.9 million. After accounting for budget carryforwards for capital assets and maintenance projects across the city, this balance is expected to decrease to $11.4 million by the end of fiscal year 2025, and the planned use of fund balance of $436,521 in fiscal year 2026. In fiscal year 2026, we will levy almost all the allowable millage through proposal MH and anticipate using the fund balance to support future year's budget stabilization. This approach aligns with the financial policies approved by city council, which directs staff to maintain a fund balance of at least 16% of regular operating expenditures plus one year of debt payments. Staff carefully adhere to this policy while developing the citywide strategic plan and proposing this budget for council consideration. Moving on to other funds, we will highlight major streets, local streets, and water and sewer funding. Other major funds are major and local streets. This fiscal year 2026 budget continues the neighborhood roads program, which will expire next year. Roads to be completed this year under this program include Dezing Drive, Belair Avenue to Alger, Groveland Street, East Lincoln to East Cowan, and East Roland Avenue, John R. to Patel. Other budget items include $20,000 for continued painting of local crosswalks and stop bars. And included in major streets is $150,000 for the tri-party city portion of John R. overlay from 14 Mile to 12.5 Mile. This project is starting this spring/summer. In addition, we have been saving for the city project of John R. from 12.5 Mile to 11 Mile. We have saved $1.5 million with another phase of funding included in fiscal year 2026 of $800,000 as our match to the federal grant for this work. This work is being planned for spring/summer of 2026. Regarding the water and sewer fund, total expenditures and revenues are projected at approximately $14.2 million, with a planned use of fund balance amounting to $148,434 for fiscal year 2026. The budget includes a proposed 6.366% increase in both water and sewer rates. This increase is necessary to offset rate hikes from our water and sewer treatment providers, who are raising their rates by 7.38% for water and an estimated 5.34% for sewer treatment. At June 30, 2025, the water and sewer department is estimated to have approximately $3.9 million available. Even with this proposed 6.336% increase, Madison Heights still has some of the lowest rates in our region. Based on the consumption average of 12 units, which is 748 gallons of water per unit, Madison Heights' average bill will be $140.40 per quarter. This chart shows the proposed fiscal year 2026 increase rate for Madison Heights compared to the current 2025 rate of other communities. I'm going to turn over to Melissa for the conclusion of this presentation.
As we developed this budget, there were several uncertainties that impacted our financial outlook. Over the past few years, many of these uncertainties have had a positive effect, thanks to federal grants and new state funding mechanisms. However, this year is significantly different, and we want to highlight several issues for your consideration as we proceed through this budget process. In the past, franchise fees from cable companies accounted for more than $500,000 in our general fund budget. With the rise of streaming services and the absence of legislation that requires public access from these platforms, this revenue stream has declined to its current level of $350,000. We are concerned that this revenue may be eliminated entirely as traditional cable companies transition to streaming platforms such as YouTube TV. Court revenues, which were traditionally $1.8 million, are narrowed budgeted at $1.5 million due to recent legislative actions and restrictions on probation, payment, and collections. We continue to advocate the State Court Administrator's Office to assume oversight and funding responsibilities for the court, but a comprehensive plan for this seems unlikely in the future. As mentioned earlier, the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget only leaves .166 of operating millage capacity, allowing us to maintain the same tax rate as fiscal year 2025 with close to $1 million of capital either eliminated or deferred. Unless the state addresses the interaction between proposal and Headley, which has been under discussion since 2015, the city will face significant challenges in funding services at the current level without an alternative funding source such as special millages. The city takes great pride in its sound financial management, careful allocation of limited resources, and commitment to long-term planning. As conditions evolve, the city will continue to adapt, ensuring a solid financial future. I would like to express my gratitude again to the mayor and city council for their leadership and support in responsibly managing the city's financial operations. Their ongoing efforts help drive the success and growth of our community. So this concludes our budget presentation, but I would like to point out I left a little show and tell at everybody stationed there. That is an example of a new newspaper insert that I spoke about during the presentation for the quarterly city newsletter. And with that, I will take any questions. And all of the department heads are here. If you have any department-specific things.
Yeah, I know we, in the past, we used to go through this one page at a time. We're not going to subject everybody to that. But I'd like to open it up, allow every council member the opportunity to ask questions and have a dialogue with either our city manager or the department heads who are probably checking their watch a little bit. We'll see if we can get you out of here. I'll open up the floor. Does anybody on council have any questions?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I had a question for city manager. Marsh, you mentioned the capital cuts that were made. I was curious how you came to that number. And if I understand that right, what are capital cuts? And I know what they are. And I know what they are, but for the folks who don't know, can you explain what that means and how you came to that number?
Sure. So capital assets and infrastructure is basically anything that costs $5,000 or more and is a fixed asset. So things like the building, the roads, those are all infrastructure-type items, and then larger pieces of equipment that cost $5,000 or more. So each year, we come up with a comprehensive capital improvement plan. We work with all the department heads. We start this process in October, and we go through really what all of our needs are and then what some of our wants are, and see if we can phase those out throughout the next five years. So we really have a good idea of what we have coming up in the future. And so when we got to the budget process and we were going to have to tap into fund balance to pay a lot of those, I worked with the department heads, in particular the DPS director, and came up with things that we thought that we could defer, we could put off another year. So ideally, we would do these things today or in the upcoming budget, but maybe we could stretch one more year out of them. And so the items that we ended up deferring were Phase 2 of the Civic Center parking lot, that was budgeted for $150,000, the dispatch furniture, which was budgeted at $65,000, the fire station parking lot, which was budgeted at $220,000, and then the fire station, one phase of the fire station roof replacement at $250,000. So at least for the fire station roof replacement, I've written a grant to the state for that through Tom Coon's office, and hopefully, we will be awarded that, but we won't know that until the fall. The rest of the things, we try to phase fund as we go along, so it will be back in the budget next year, hopefully.
And I guess what I was trying to help everyone understand, including myself primarily, is those capital improvements, those are needs. Those aren't wants that were stretched out. Am I hearing that right?
These items are things I would consider needs. There are a couple other things. One in particular, for those of you who attended the State of the City, you saw Hazel Park's drone that they share between the police and fire. So that was put forward by the fire and police department. The expenditure was $25,000, and we originally were including that in the budget because it definitely does have some benefits. But is it an absolute must-have? No, it's more like a "this would be nice to have" sort of thing. So that got cut right out of the gate, and that's not still on the list as a need. That is something we would pursue grant funding for. We also have the Madison Heights Community Foundation that has some money, so that's something that maybe they would want to fund or fund a portion of going forward, but those are the types of things that have been cut. But for sure, the items that I listed, especially the fire station roof, which I'm sure the chief would speak to, is a need by far, so we're hopeful to be successful with the grant.
Okay. And the only reason I wanted you to kind of dig into that a little bit is so it was understood that, like, we're not cutting, like, wants, like, we're cutting back places and things that we need to address and stretching it out. So that's, good job by all of you guys.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Your honor, I noted, you talked about eliminating several positions, full-time positions. Can you talk about that a little bit for us?
Sure. So all four of those positions were vacant, so we're not doing any layoffs or anything like that. Three of them were a program that we brought to city council last year through an emergency medical technician-type program. It was going to be kind of like a feeder system. It was a kind of an innovative idea in this area, and it was going to be sort of a feeder system into our fire department and EMS program. That kind of fell flat. Like I said, it was kind of a new, out-of-the-box kind of thinking idea. I still do think it's a fabulous idea, but I might be the only person that thinks that now. Anyway, given that, we eliminated those positions. And then we eliminated the grant and special projects position when Adam left, and so those tasks have been reassigned to a couple of the department heads, and then mostly Harley Mordarsky got upgraded in my department, so she's taken over a lot of those responsibilities.
Thank you.
I like the term "upgraded." You should put that on your business card.
Promoted, I should have said.
There you go.
Your honor?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question. In terms of law enforcement, police, is the SIU still staying?
Yes, do you want to talk about that, chief?
Councilman Saltus, thanks for the question. So yes, SIU is operating, currently operating with a sergeant and an officer, and the intention is to keep it moving forward and to add an additional officer into the unit when we have enough staffing, backfill staffing to get that third position in there.
So the backfill, is that part of the budget then?
Yes, yeah, it's part of it. We just, we're not quite at full staffing at the moment, so, and SIU is considered a support position, and so the support positions typically get filled last.
Thank you. Other questions from council?
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Fong?
Yep. So I have a couple of questions. The first of all is the Water and Sewer Fund, which has an increase to $14 million, hold on a second, $14 million, 358,476, which is 510,000 more. Is that including the Gleewa portion, or is it, what is that coming from, the increase?
So the majority, that is the commodity increase for water and the sewer treatment. Those have already been included, the 7.38% and the little over 5% for those. Those are included in this amount already.
So the residents really are making up that difference in our budget, per se?
Yes, we don't have the fund balance capacity in the water sewer department to eat those increases. For those of you who might have been on council, probably Mark and Dave, several years ago, we used to try to eat those increases to the point that we could, at least every other year, until the Water and Sewer Fund actually went bankrupt. And so we did a loan from the general fund to the water and sewer, I think in 2006, when they only had $500. So that's not a state that you can let your water and sewer department get in, and so we really have to pass these increases along. The city has been very aggressive in replacing water mains, especially when we do roadwork, and that really is to the benefit of our community. We don't have a lot of the issues that other communities have. We try to prevent water main breaks that way, and it really is the best way to do it. We skipped doing water mains under roads one year due to lack of passing on water rates, and then we had a water main break under a brand-new road and had to tear up the brand-new road, which cost us almost double. So that really is not, you know, fiscally prudent. And then if you looked at the slide, so we do an extensive water rate study, and water rates in Madison Heights, even at the 2026 rate, are still on the low end. All the rest of the rates appear, if you can see the small number on the far right-hand side, that's the average bill for everybody today, and the highlighted yellow would be once we pass on this water increase. So we still do have very, I know people complain, but water still is very economical when you think one unit is 748 gallons of water, and the average person uses 12 units. So we can't sustain taking on the 7% increase and still doing our infrastructure repairs that are needed across the city.
Understandable. Yeah, and I know that we did have some people that represented us down to Gleewa, and they raised the rates, and I'm glad that we did that, too. Secondly, about the parks maintenance improvement, it's almost doubling this year. Do you know if we have any grants that we're looking for from maybe the DNR or other state, you know, grants that we could get to possibly help some of the improvements to the parks?
Are you talking about the Parks Maintenance and Improvement Fund 208, or are you talking about the Parks Department and the general fund?
Just in the general fund, I guess, or the improvements that we're doing early. What you're saying is two different items, but the one for the improving of the parks, I know that, like, Oakland County has their improvements, one or two, well, one park for sure, Red Oaks, and then we're doing, I think, McGilvery Park. Is that getting an upgrade there?
So not this year. We're still focused heavily on Rosie's Park. So Oakland County does have grants, but Oakland County is investing $7.2 million in Madison Heights this year with the complete reimagination of Ambassador Park. So that kind of takes us off their grant list because they have obligations to other places in the county. And Oakland County Parks has been very generous to Madison Heights. Not only at the nature center, they're doing a ton of improvements at the nature center. They're doing the 7.2 million at Ambassador Park. They gave us a grant for the pickleball courts. They gave us a grant for the basketball courts. So they have been very generous any time that we have asked them in the past, so we do not currently have any grant opportunities with them because we're going through the Ambassador Park thing. So the things that are in the Parks Department is the $50,000 for special project funding. The whole idea behind that, and Mark can kind of talk about it because it was originally his idea, was to save that money up and do something bigger or use it to do, like, grant matches, which is what we've done because we've been very successful with grants. So that money really, if it doesn't get spent, it will go back into the fund balance, but I spend it every year. Then the Civic Center Park pavilion sea roof replacement and repair, we have some critical situation in the Civic Center Park with some of our pavilions that the roofs need to be replaced, so that definitely is a need. And then the rest of these really focus on Rosie's Park, but I would think one of the most significant things is a $525,000 expenditure that you're seeing in the Parks budget. That equals a revenue side of $525,000 for a grant that we received to replace those ballfield lights. So even though you see the expenditures in this department going up 500,000, there's a $500,000 revenue to offset that. So we easily could have put that in a completely separate fund. It's not like an increase in general fund usage.
Okay, that sounds a lot better than it did before.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Your honor?
Yes?
I had two additional questions, and then I'm done, I swear.
I mean, you don't have to.
Maybe, I was about to say, maybe.
Yeah, you don't have to be.
Unless, you know, first of which is related to revenue and appropriation, and are different sources of income and revenue. There was like a question in general about how much ability we have to appropriate it at our discretion. Are there certain income from taxes that have to be spent certain ways where we can't just say, hey, I want to move money from this bucket to that bucket, or from the general fund to the pension fund? Are there limits, or?
Oh, 100%, there's limits. So every time you levy a tax, except for the general operating millage tax, or say proposal MH, which was very clearly levied for general use, there is a specific use for it. And typically, the millage, like, if you look at the millage language that we're going to roll out for R4, it's very specific as to what it can be used for. So if you look under the taxes, there's like taxes for operating, we can use that for anything, but then taxes for solid waste, that can only be used for that, what that public act under solid waste calls for, and we can't commingle those funds. It's all accounted for in the general fund, but during audit time, Linda has to calculate that right down to the penny, and then anything that we don't spend, for example, in police and fire pension, if we don't spend that on police and fire pension administration or contributions, it gets reserved. It's actually legally restricted. So during the financial statements, when the auditors are here and they're talking about the fund balance totals, you might see this fund balance of $11 million, but there easily could be a million dollars of that that's restricted strictly for roads or police and fire pension or something else, the rest of it. We actually spend more on the activity than we generate now from any of the rest of the millages. So like solid waste, for example, we don't take in enough to pay the solid waste cost, which is one of the things that came up at our trash talk conversation, is the general fund is supplementing now our solid waste expenditures, which is money that we could be using on police or fire or parks or something else.
I got you. And then my final question, there weren't more, because you answered it.
Okay.
You answered my question. In general, do we do, we do priority-based budgeting? I heard you say priority a couple times, or project-based budgeting?
Oh, we very much do priority-based budgeting, which is really a switch. When I became the city manager, I thought, if I only change one thing, I'm changing this, and I changed the way that we do our goals and the way we do budgeting. And we set our priorities during the strategic planning meeting with council. You hear from the department heads and myself about what our needs are. You express to me what your priorities are. We come up with the strategic plan, which basically, I mean, strategic plan is just a fancy way of saying this is our list of what we want our priorities to be for the upcoming years. And then we craft our line item about that. I mean, the department heads know the types of items that you guys discuss, and so when they submit their budget to me, we make sure that those things are included. So for example, on your strategic planning priority is the co-responder program. So I wouldn't entertain a, you know, budget from the police chief that didn't continue that without council knowing that that was in there. So it definitely is priority-based, and instead of making, like, every department come up with five little goals that we're going to toss at council, we really focus on what the city council wants to go for. And that goes back to always public safety first. If you want the safe community, then nobody really wants to be here, and then we try to repair our infrastructure and take care of the things that we already have, and then quality of life.
Thank you.
Your honor?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for all this information, but I want to ask the marijuana money, is that still being used up, or is that part of the budget that we?
Oh, yeah. I actually sent a report, and I don't have it in front of me, I probably could pull it up to city council two weeks ago, I think, very extensive report on the marijuana money and how it really has benefited the city. So that was, one of the reasons we did it was to increase taxable value in the community as an economic development tool, and, you know, your feelings about the product aside, it really has worked for economic development in the community. Some taxable values of these parcels, because we required them to go to places that had been abandoned or needed to be renovated, and the, like, community engagement that they do or the community give back, we now have set up a actual nonprofit, the Madison Heights Community Foundation, that is funded by these marijuana companies. We also get roughly around $51,000 to $52,000 a year from the state, every community in the state of Michigan does. It's our allocation of the tax for each retail business that you have in your community, and that is included in the budget as well as the licensing fees. So the money that they give for the community foundation is not part of the city anymore. I mean, it really never was part of the city. It was a donation through a type of nonprofit, but the money for the licensing fees is included, and the money from the state is included, as well as the increase in taxes.
Any other questions from council?
Just a comment, your honor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Looking through the 375 or so pages of the line budget, every department had a decrease, so we're pinching from every department. The few that maybe had an increase was pretty minimal, and as Counselor Wright was alluding to, some of the things that we've eliminated are things we should be doing, but in an effort to kind of keep us positioned for years to come, as we've said before in these meetings, we're always looking ahead. So we tried to pinch a few of those pennies in every single department this year. One thing, maybe, city manager Mercer, if you can explain or talk a little bit about what we've done differently with the MERS pension. I know there's been some question already in the community about that, and you and I talked about it yesterday.
So I could talk about MERS pension for an hour. I'll try to keep it to two minutes.
Don't. Please, please give us the short answer.
So the city has had a defined benefit pension plan. It's actually closed to the general employees as of, I think, 2009, but there's still a liability. There's a liability for the people that are currently retired, and there's a liability for the handful of employees that are still here that get that benefit. As people leave the city through retirement or whatnot, we still have a liability for the people that are retired, and so that total cost is close to $900,000, I think. And we used to spread that across all the active employees, so you would see it in every single department. Well, now, if we spread it against all those employees, you would see one department carrying a pension cost of like $200,000, and that does not, it's not transparent for the cost of that employee, and it isn't accurate anymore because it truly is a cost for the retirees that we have. So we moved all of that from the different departments into general administration. So I actually saw this comment on Facebook earlier today from someone who took the time to look at our budget, and they point out that under general administration, the MERS pension went from $172,000 in the fiscal year today to $912,000, but that's just an accounting move. It was, in the past, spread out across all the different departments. So the pension, the defined benefit pension is actually spread between the general fund and the water and sewer departments, depending on where those retirees' home departments used to be.
Yeah, so there's not just this large bucket in general administration that's vague and unexplained. The reason that went, that's the parbit that went up is that we moved all that cost that probably was not accurately reflected in each department and put it in general administration.
That's true.
Yeah, I think many years ago, I think we said, like, 20 cents of every tax dollar is directly tied towards pensions and our, taking care of our retirees. is directly tied towards pensions and our taking care of our retirees. I don't know if that's still true, but tied into what we were just talking about here?
I would think that's probably a little bit more. If you look at the, I don't know the exact percentage, but if you look at this slide for the millage, you will see that seven mills of the millage goes to the police and fire pension. So our millage is roughly 25 mills, and seven of that is pension benefits. So I could do the math.
Yeah, I think that was the old adage is, you know, 20, 20 cents of every tax dollar. And so that makes the job a little more difficult, because, you know, it's not as easy as slashing the budget, because we're paying for the services that our residents received 20 years ago, while also trying to provide the services that our residents are receiving today.
So it's 27% now?
27. Okay, so it's up. We should definitely, I don't know if there's a way to make that more clear in the budget, or maybe have a chart on that tied in when we push this out with the full meeting to the public in May. But I think that that awareness is really helpful, because we're trying to fulfill those promises that previous councils made while doing our job today. So I think that that's important to note. I also think that it would be helpful if we could break out the general operating a little bit more, maybe into the areas that we were talking about. So police and fire have their section, but it'd be nice to see like a quality of life section, instead of just the 810 for general operating. I think that would allow our residents to really understand where their dollars are coming from, or coming, or going to. Because, you know, even breaking out, like what is, what is the library aspect of this? Things that our residents care about, are passionate about, and want to see the investments in, I think might be getting a little bit lost in the shuffle as we tie everything into general operating. So that would be, I think, a helpful edit as we go into the next formal meeting. But I don't know, does council have any other, any other questions or comments? Okay, well, I just want to thank all of our department heads for being here. I wish I had individual questions for each of you to make you feel more, more welcome and engaged as a part of this process. But on behalf of council, thank you for being here. We appreciate your presence. I don't know if we want to, we're not taking any action on the presentation tonight. That'll be in the next one. Do we need to give like a one-minute recess to allow the department heads to leave?
They'll be quiet.
They'll be quiet. Okay. Well, thank you all. It was great seeing you. So with that, we're going to move to meeting open to the public. If there's any people from the public that are here that wish to speak, you have a limit of three minutes on your comments, and we would ask that you state your name and address for the record, if you're willing. Anybody from the public want to speak? No? Okay. So then we will move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion from council on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes, Council Roebuck?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Can I get a second?
It's important.
All right, motion by Council Roebuck, second by Council Mear. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. All right. Nothing in communications. Move down to Reports Seven from the Police Chief. This is the amendment for the School Resource Officer for Lanford, the second one.
So just heard about this in the budget, but the Lanford School District has requested an amendment to the memorandum of understanding to add an additional School Resource Officer to their district. This addition is reflected in the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget for the 2025-26 school year. Furthermore, the original agreement included a cost-sharing agreement of 60% from the district and 40% from the city. However, based on actual time spent, this allocation has been revised to 70% from the district and 30% from the city, as outlined in the attached amendment. Staff is requesting that city council approve this amendment to the School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding with Lanford School District, and the school has already approved this.
Awesome. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes, Council Mear.
I move that we approve the amendment of the SRO under the memorandum of understanding with Lanford School District.
All right, is there support?
Your Honor, support?
All right. Any discussion from council?
Your Honor, I do have a question. Is this a new arrangement just for the, for, will be applied to both resource officers, 70-30, or is it going to be just for the new resource officer?
No, it's going to be for both. When we originally wrote the first amendment, we really had no idea how much time they were going to spend, and we just roughly counted the days of how many school, how many days school was in session out of the calendar year. But as that actually has gone into practice, and the chief can speak more to this, that officer spends almost all of his time dedicated to the school. So still at 70-30, the city is supplementing this School Resource Officer to Lanford. So that is going to be applied to both of them, starting in the new school year.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just, I understand why, but let's talk about, this is Lanford Schools has come to us and asked for this. We haven't said, hey, let's go do this, excluding our other district in the city.
No, quite to the contrary, and the chief can speak to this too, if you would like him to elaborate. But we engaged with both of the school districts at the beginning when we started this program now, which has been two years, I think. We talked to both of the schools, and actually Madison District School met with the chief numerous times, and they talked about it at their school board meeting, and made a agreement or decided not to go with this direction. So they didn't feel that was right for their district, and that's fine, and Lanford did. So they moved that way. We have not reached back out to them a second time. We feel they made their decision, and they know that we're open to it if they want to approach us. Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
I have one other, I'm sorry, one other question.
Yes, go ahead.
Do we know, maybe the chief can explain, will this be a current officer that we have already, or will it be a new hire, or somebody that we're?
So it isn't. While he's walking up to the podium, it's not a new position in the budget. So we already had this position, because originally we had budgeted for one Lanford SRO and one Madison SRO. The Madison SRO did not get filled, so we just reallocated that position to the second Lanford. But as far as who that's going to be, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, we're going to start a selection process. Actually, I was waiting for this tonight, to, you know, for this to get approved, and then we're going to start a selection process. But that person will be selected from our current staffing at the Police Department.
Sounds like a good replay.
Awesome. Hey, chief, before you walk away, could you maybe give a highlight of the success of the program so far?
Yeah, so we, the first year that our School Resource Officer, Tim Hurst, was at Lanford High School, we met pretty regularly with, with the administration there. And every single time I met with him, it was, this is the best partnership we've ever had. Everything's going fantastic. He talks to the kids, he does this program, he does this. So they are incredibly happy, and we've continued to meet with them regularly. Well, we've, we've actually slowed it down, because every single time, it's like, well, call me if there's an issue, because it seems to be going so well. And obviously, it was his example that, that they said, hey, maybe we could use a second School Resource Officer. So they're actually looking at Page Middle School as where that individual will be stationed. So it's been a very successful program, and which is why they reached out to us a second time and asked for another one.
Now, could you go over, just really high level, there's, there's a huge benefit in, you know, community policing and allowing the students to have positive relationships with officers. And equally, their boots on the ground when there's an emergency or an issue. We've had a couple of minor examples of that, that you don't have to dig into the specifics, but high level, those two benefits of having that resource officer there?
Absolutely. So, you know, I don't like to talk about them all the time, but in police work, we do have to talk about that worst-case scenario that could occur on the school grounds. But having an individual there, right there within the school, is a huge benefit, to be able to react and move and get to that location immediately, versus having to respond from either the station or out there in the city somewhere. So that's a huge benefit. And they are also looking, they are also looking at a program, some type of, I don't know if you know how to bill, but some type of program where they hit a bracelet and, or some type of thing, that they hit a sensor, and Officer Hurst wears a sensor, and he knows, and he can help, and he can move to that location. So, and we've also partnered up with the door access. We've been able to give door access to our officers in that worst-case scenario. We've, they've given us access to some of their cameras, so we can actually help monitor the school. So, so for that worst-case scenario, we are definitely, this partnership has been fantastic. And yes, our officer patrols the school, and he meets with the children, he meets with the kids. He is, I think, seen more as a part of school staff these days than really a police officer. So it's been a huge benefit to be able to reach out to those individuals and be comfortable approaching a police officer. That always hasn't, hasn't always been the case. But now we have students who are comfortable reaching out to a police officer, talking about issues, and our, and our School Resource Officer able to provide resources to those individuals.
I love it. Me personally, I think it's an incredible program. I'm thankful that we have it. I would encourage the Madison District to get on board. I don't know if we can ask for them to do maybe a joint meeting with us, with their school board and our city council. But, you know, it would be helpful to understand the reasons why they didn't want to do it, as well as giving them the updates on the success that the Lanford District has seen with it. I don't know if that's possible. I don't know if they'd be willing. But I would personally like to extend the invitation to the Madison District, and we can have an open dialogue. It would have to be a public meeting. It would have to be, you know, for, for all of council to be there. But I'd love to be able to have that dialogue with them in a public way, allow their residents, who are also our residents, to be able to come out and, you know, ask those questions, because the program has been so successful that Lanford is already doubling it. And I would expect that that's not the end of it for the Lanford District as well. You know, it's possible that we might see a third one floating between elementary schools at some point here soon, because it is so impactful and successful. And for us, as a community, being able to have those relationships with the students earlier on, I think adds a whole new level of the ability to keep our city safe long-term, because those relationships are already established.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I would say we would love to have a partnership with Madison Schools if they would, if they would want to do explore it as well. So we agree.
Well, thank you, chief. Any other questions from council before we vote on this?
Thank you, chief.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve this amendment to the SRO, understanding an agreement with Lanford School District, which is now a revised 70% of the budget to the school, and 70, or 30% of the city, as outlined in our attached sheets. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right. Next up, we have the CED Director, the special land use request at 31691 Dequender Road, major auto repair and service.
So the applicant requests special land use approval from the city council under Section 15.05 of the Madison Heights zoning ordinance to operate a used car lot and major auto repair service business at 31691 Dequender Road, zoned M1 Lot Industrial. The property is located on the west side of Dequender, north of Whitcomb Avenue. The car lot is allowed by right at this location. However, the major auto repair and service requires special approval. The Planning Commission held the required public hearing on April the 8th, and recommended approval with conditions of the special land use request. Staff recommends a motion to either approve or disapprove the land use request number PSP 25-01 for a major auto repair and service facility at 31691 Dequender, based upon the Planning Commission's findings outlined in the staff report with the following conditions. The major site plan, when submitted, shall substantially consent to the concept plan approved with the special land use submittal. However, the site plan shall be modified as needed to meet the minimum interior parking lot island requirements of Section 11.06, the minimum stormwater management requirements of Section 11.03, and other minimum zoning ordinance standards, unless waived, as part of the special land use or major site plan review. Given the adjacent industrial land use and minimal buffer widths, the minimum perimeter parking lot landscaping requirements of Section 11.06.3 may be reduced along the southern property line as part of the major site plan review. And number three, the final site plan and use shall satisfy the use-specific standards for auto repair and service facilities contained in Section 7.03.2 and attached to the staff report. The use-specific operating conditions shall be listed in the final certificate of occupancy, and the applicant is here tonight, as well as our planner. If you have any questions?
Awesome. So the public hearing was already held at the Planning Commission. So what is the wish of council on this item? Don't all jump in.
Your Honor?
Yes, Council Roebuck. Thank you.
Give me one more second.
Your motion could simply be to approve or deny as read by the city manager, if that helps.
Well, then let's do that. I move that council approves the, the special land use request number PSP 2501 for a major auto repair facility at 31691 Dequender Road, based upon the findings as reported by the city manager.
Awesome. That satisfy legal?
Including the conditions approved by the Planning Commission.
And including the conditions approved by the Planning Commission.
Awesome. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Seconds.
All right, second by Council Mersultus. All right, discussion. Anybody on council have questions, comments, concerns?
Your Honor?
Yes, Council Wright.
One concern, I know we had talked about wanting to be inclusive, to trying to develop different types of businesses, and there being some huge concerns about adding additional auto repair, car-type adaptations to our community, a lot of the car washes that were a big rage. So this, and Planning Commission was something that was kind of giving a thumbs up and said, conditionally, we'll approve it, with that in mind.
Well, the Planning Commission cannot conditionally approve anything. They recommend approval or denial back to the city council. So ultimately, the approval lies with this body.
Okay. And I don't know if it helps, I wasn't, I wasn't at that meeting. I was recovering from the flu, so I missed that one. But it looks like the Planning Commission essentially said that because at this site, a used car lot could be opened by right, the only question is whether or not there can be the repair and servicing as a part of this. And it seems like they determined that at this particular location, that wasn't a problem, adding the repair and service onto what otherwise would have been used car lot.
Okay.
City Manager Marsh, did I get that right?
Yes. There was some discussion about the number of car places in Madison Heights, but that was the overall consensus.
Yeah, and I mean, that's the general consensus that we've heard repetitively about the concerns about that. And that's why I asked that question. But given that answer, I feel comfortable voting.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I had that same question, being that, I believe, I can't remember who said, like, I floated the idea, it wasn't anything that we passed about never approving a single car-related business thing in the city. Again, when I look at this, at the, you know, existing conditions, the photos and street view and things like that, I mean, this obviously is, this is not a part of the city that is going to have, you know, acute downtown, and like this, this is, this is the kind of business that works well in this area of our city. So I personally... our city. So I personally think it would be a satisfactory use of this, this area of our city. And it, like you said, by right, they can do the car, they're already able to do a car-related business there. So by right. And so making this special, special approval, simply to me, makes sense as, you know, they can be a more successful business in, in putting many things together. So that is, that is my thought about that. I certainly wasn't, I wasn't in favor of the idea that we should never approve the car-related business in the city again. I think that was a little, a step too far in the first place. So, thank you.
Could our, could our planner, Matt, could you maybe hop up to the mic and give a quick overview of that discussion at planning? Because I, I think you're hearing, there's a little bit of a resistance here, but we acknowledge some of the same rationale that I think the Planning Commission discussed.
Your Honor.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Lewis. The, the Planning Commission, you know, did share some of the concerns, especially because they have been involved with the development of the master plan and the new zoning ordinance. And the auto-centric type uses in a lot of places are a little overabundant. However, as part of the special land use category or land use process, it's required to look at the adjacent land uses, look to see what's across the street, look to see what the future land use categories are, and everything's industrial. So the discussion, a lot of it was about, well, what are the actual impacts of a auto repair use? A lot of them, they found were pretty similar to an industrial type use, odors, fumes, noises, coupled with the fact that there are no adjacent residences around it, which is why the, the car sales portion of it is allowed by right. And if there were adjacent residences, it would also be a special land use. On top of the fact that this site has been sitting vacant for a couple of years now, and there's a big part of the back parking lot that's in disrepair. So it was, I think, a balance of, you know, what can we see out of this type of use? What can we see out of this type of development? Even though it's auto-centric, given the location, it may be an appropriate area.
And Councilman Fleming, you had a question?
Yeah, excuse me. So we've had some auto thefts, you know, going on around our city, especially on lots that are from, that used car lots and even brand-new motor vehicle lots, dealers that are brand-new dealers. What are you going to be implementing to, you know, not have any auto thefts, like gates, cameras, what kind of security measures?
If I could, I could introduce the applicant here and have him respond to that. I think you'd be better suited. If you want to come up to the mic.
If nothing else, it'll make you have to not answer that question.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ojean, and I am the applicant. Councilman Fleming, to answer your question, I, I owned and operated a used car lot in Detroit for almost a decade. Keeping cars safe in Detroit is a tall order. I've learned a lot. What we're going to implement there is, is things that were successful that we found at our older lot that we're going to try to do here. In 2020, we partnered with a Guardian alarm, and they set up an amazing system on our lot. It's called a virtual Guardian. They basically, they put cameras all over the lot. Any kind of movement, and the camera triggers, and the video gets sent to a live attendant. They have access to the police, they have access to speakers, to strobe lights. Along with that, there will be a fence surrounding the entire parking lot. A typical thing that we would do at our other lot is we kept a giant safe. You were never going to drive out of our lot with one of our keys, 1,000%. You had to steal this safe that was bolted to the ground and then about 200, 300 pounds of cement inside the safe. Another thing that we would do is we would park a massive truck at the front door and take the key home. So if you by God got a car off of our lot, I would probably hire you because you did a very nice job. But again, that all comes with experience, almost 10 years of, you know, radios and catalytic converters. And just through the experience, you know, we know what they want. We know how to safeguard it. And there are so many tools out there that weren't available years ago. And again, the biggest one is virtual Guardian. I can go to bed, if anything moves on the lot, it's picked up within a second. If that person or thing on the lot is not responding back to the speaker, to Guardian, the police are on their way. And again, there's strobe lights and sirens, and the keys are, are kept away. So if you magically made a key, you'd have to plow through a truck to get this car out. And again, if you got it out, I'd probably hire you to help me better, you know, keep track of my vehicles. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Anything else from council for the applicant?
I just wanted to make one more comment, and this is what kind of differentiates us from maybe some of the other repair facilities. A lot of the other repair facilities that you'll drive by, they're very, I'm going to call it street-facing. You'll see the shop and all the bay doors, bay doors open, there's cars sitting there, they're parked, or they're broken. We only have one bay door in, that's not even visible, and one bay door out. There will be no, nobody will ever be able to tell that we're working on cars unless you are inside of our building. And we did that for specific reasons. One, for safekeeping. Two, to minimize sound. And three, to control the flow of traffic. Nobody will know driving by that there's cars being worked on. And that's, that's a breath of fresh air compared to maybe you drive by and there's 12 bays, and you can see what's going on and all the noises, and the bays are opening and closing, cars are being pushed in and out. You're not going to see that here. You're going to drive by, it's going to be a beautiful building with one entrance that you'll never see, it's in the back, and one exit out of the side. And that's to control the traffic, and two, that's to minimize the disturbance to the surrounding community.
Thank you, sir.
Wait, Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Saltus?
So it's interesting that you said that if whatever triggers the lights and alarms that the police are going to show up, what, how does that work?
Guardian calls them.
So Guardian's going to call them?
Guardian calls. And again, Guardian doesn't call right away. Guardian's got a set of procedures. There's a way to communicate with whoever's on the lot. They assess the situation. If nothing else works, the nuclear option is you call the police. But again, to get that car off the lot with the safeguard, you need a lot of time. And again, things are going to happen. And this can happen at any business, car lot, it could happen at a jewelry store, it could happen anywhere. But our goal is to buy enough time to stop it. And that's what you really want. You know, you're not so much worried about the damage that they're doing to the building or the cars that are there. You're worried about just buying yourself enough time to stop it from happening. And that's for any business.
So let me ask you two, the catalytic converter used to be a big thing. Is that still the same way?
No.
No.
Yeah, it's not that big of an issue anymore. One, there's been a great reduction in catalytic converter scrap price. And two, a lot more EVs on the road, no catalytic converter needed. So that, I don't want to say it's a thing of the past, but it's definitely something that we don't see that much, like we did maybe a decade ago. Yep. Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
A decade ago, Nicolas Cage could have gotten the car out of that lot in 60 seconds. So.
Yes, he could have and saved his brother's life. So, yeah, absolutely.
There you go. All right. I, I'd like to ask the, the planner, two questions. Matt, if you'd be so kind. The, the first, he mentioned the fencing. How is that going to align with our existing design standards? So we'll tackle that first.
Yeah, so any site element of this that isn't placed as a condition of the special land use approval would need to meet our ordinance language, our zoning ordinance language. So the Planning Commission, actually, our, our staff report had said to the Planning Commission that along the buffer, the, the southern, the western, and the northern property lines, the Planning Commission could waive the landscaping requirements because their adjacent land uses are compatible industrial. Planning Commission felt that actually there should be landscaping on all of those, except for the southern, just because it's a very narrow strip of land. So that would have to meet ordinance requirements. Fencing, we have a fence ordinance, that would all have to meet our, our zoning ordinance requirements. And we would check.
Could you, could you elaborate on that just for the general public? Because if they heard giant fencing all around, they might think that it, that's more like prison yard.
Sure. Well.
That's not what it's going to be.
Yeah. So, I mean, adjacent to the property lines, where it's most visible, it's going to be landscaping. So there aren't going to be huge fences along the, the edges of the property. The Planning Commission felt that landscaping would be more appropriate. Let me pull up, and I'm glad I brought my ordinance because I almost didn't.
You should get a pocket version.
It's my phone. So in a commercial district, the maximum fence height in the rear yard and the side yard is eight feet. So it can't be any taller than eight feet. In the front yard, it's a maximum of six feet, which is like a typical residential fence. We also don't allow any type of kind of mesh screening unless there's a variance granted to be inserted into the fence for maintenance purposes. So if there's a chain link fence, for example, it's going to be eight feet tall and it's going to be open. So it's not going to be barricaded in.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council before I ask my last question? All right. I also want to know, this was vacant and dilapidated beforehand. Do we have an estimate in what the increase in taxable value will be after the investment that the applicant is going to make into the property?
Sure. I don't, unfortunately, don't have a, an exact number, but I can tell you that the rear portion of the lot has been in disrepair. It was a gravel, a gravel storage yard. And by that, I don't mean they were storing gravel. It was a gravel surface, and I think there were tires back there. And it was, at one point, a landscaping supply store. So there were a lot of materials in there. Over time, it's worn down. As part of this proposal, that's going to be all torn up and replaced with a hard-paved asphalt surface. And there has to be a stormwater mitigation as well. So all of that will up the property value of it because it's an investment into the property. But I unfortunately don't have the, the exact numbers for you.
But it would, it would be a, sorry, a tangible increase, or is this minor?
Well, it's, again, it's going to be dependent on if, if the applicant has a, has a number in mind for the engineering costs. That's how we base kind of a lot of our permitting fees. But I would, I would say it's major from a planning standpoint in that it is bringing the site up to ordinance standards. And if the applicant ever chooses to sell, we want you to be here for a long time, they are selling a property that is compliant with, with the ordinance, and there's less improvements that a future property owner would have to make to, to move in.
Awesome. Thank you so much for the discussion and the information. Final question, comments from council? All right. So we have a motion on the table to approve the special land use request at 31691 Dequender Road. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Congratulations. Welcome to Madison Heights.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Councilman.
All right. Now we move to bid awards and purchases. This is the DPS material hauling.
The Department of Public Services utilizes a contractor to furnish and deliver a variety of materials related to landscape, roadway, and infrastructure maintenance and construction projects. The same contractor also handles and disposes of waste materials and various maintenance and construction activities, including the fall leaf collection program. With the extended contract expiring the end of this fiscal year, DPS staff prepared an invitation to bid, which included additional materials commonly utilized throughout the year, several of which have become a difficult source as companies are required to, as companies have been acquired or have otherwise gone out of business. The complete and lowest bidder was provided by GFL Environmental, the city's current hauling contractor. Therefore, staff recommends that council award the bid for DPS material handling to the lowest responsible bidder, GFL Environmental of Northville, at the unit price specified for five years. Funding is budgeted and available.
Thank you. What's the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Mayor?
I will move to approve the awarding of the bid to, of DPS material hauling to the lowest responsible bidder, bidder, GFL Environmental, at the unit's price specified for five years.
Okay. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this DPS material hauling bid award?
Your Honor.
Yes.
How confident are we that GFL will not sell this portion of their business before the end of our five-year term?
I can't have that with any kind of certainty.
They're a reliable company for us.
This is the only portion of their business that they have retained at this point, though. So I don't really know the answer to that.
I know you don't, but.
That's comforting. Though, to be fair, honestly, we, we did not expect them to sell the other portion of the business during our last contract.
Certainly they did.
That's a good question. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor in awarding this bid for DPS material hauling to GFL Environmental in Northville? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. All right, now we have the bid award that was added, item number 10, the senior home chore yard services contract with Capital Landscapes.
So we've received a grant of $100,000 from Olsha to offer services, to extend services, I guess, to seniors throughout our community to include not only grass cutting and snow removal, but also separate yard cleanup services. Therefore, we are asking council to extend the bid that we had with Capital Landscaping for a price of not to exceed $100,000 that will actually go through the end of next June, June 2026, to be able to provide these services as, as we can. So staff is recommending approval of the contract for Olsha ARPA-funded senior home chore and yard services with Capital Landscape and the city of Madison Heights in an amount not to exceed $100,000. All grant funded, no tax dollars.
Awesome. With that, what's the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman, right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract of Olsha ARPA-funded senior home chore yard services with Capital Landscape and the city of Madison Heights in the amount not to exceed $100,000.
And Councilwoman Robach, did you want a second on that?
I do.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the approved CDBG.
No.
No? Hold on. Olsha? Okay. Olsha ARPA-funded senior home chore yard services with Capital Landscapes and the city of Madison Heights in an amount that's not to exceed $100,000. Any comments, questions?
Just, Your Honor, this seems like our easiest thing to vote on tonight. So, sure. That's why I added it because it seemed like this would be, this actually, if possible, could have went under the consent agenda, but.
Easiest thing to vote on? Did you not see that budget presentation?
Your Honor, I do have a question for the city manager. I know that, well, there really doesn't have, I mean, I'm going to vote yes for this because this is a great benefit for our seniors and disabled residents that have disabilities. And it would make it more inclusive for them and helping them out with the tasks of getting their lawns cut and their snow removal. But how do they actually sign up? Because I know some people, they don't even know about these programs, and they don't know even how to sign up and, and utilize it.
So they can contact the Active Adult Center to sign up. And at first, so part of this money is already utilized because if you recall, when we approved the CDBG budget back in, or program back in November of 2024, our allocation of CDBG funding that could be used for lawn service and snow removal was reduced by way of the way the county allocates money now. So in order to provide those residents that were already qualified for that program a full year of services and not say, you know, we're only going to cut your grass in June, part of this money, about $64,000 of it, is already going to be allocated towards that. There is capacity for about 15 other people, so there's only 65 people in this program. It sounds like $140,000 goes a long way, but it ends up covering about 65 people. So there is some capacity, and people should contact the Active Adult Center.
Okay. Thank you.
And this would be a great thing to include in our. And this would be a great thing to include in our quarterly inserts into the Madison Park News. Programs like this, the more that people are aware of them, the more that they utilize. And especially when it's money that's not coming directly out of the city budget, it's very important that we get them utilized. Any other comments from council before we vote? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, motion passes. And with that, we've made it to the end of our meeting. We'll do closing comments as usual, starting with Councilman Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm happy to say that we have closed registration for Little League and have 172 kids signed up to, that are anxiously awaiting the May 17th opening day. That number's up from about 148 from last year. So I'd love to see that increasing, hope that continues. Thank you for all of the support from some of the city's vendors and of course, the folks, some of the folks at this table. Couldn't do without you, so come out and join us on May 17th and cheer on some of those 172 kids that we'll have out there. Recreation, registration is open, so check that out. Their run for the health of it is coming up on the 26th of April, so expect to see us all out there. Busy that day, but the rest of you, I'm sure you'll. The library is, I had Tinker Tuesday today, speaking of some of the things they do with the Makers Center. They have the, the third Tuesday of every month, so check that out. They also have the tween book club next week and toddler story time on Tuesdays and Golden Bookworms on Tu-, next Tuesday. So check some of that stuff out. The National Telecommunicators and National Animal Officer, Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. Wonderful stuff, good job. Thank you for the wonderful job that those folks all do for us. Today, or this April is Alcohol Awareness and Underage Drinking Prevention Month. So young people who start drinking before the age of 15, 15 are much higher risk of, of developing alcoholism disorders later in life. So please stay educated about that, have the talk with your children and preventive measures to, to, to keep them away from that fun stuff. The numbers are actually pretty impressive. I don't have them all memorized, but a lot of the young folks are, are at least saying they're staying away from that stuff. So please have that conversation with your youngsters on the dangers of that. April is also Autism Awareness Month, so if, in a world where you can be really anything, please just be kind. Thank you.
Awesome, Counselor Wright.
I'd like to start off just by acknowledging it's Black Maternal Health Week. It's through April 11th through the 17th. It's not a coincidence that it falls on this week. This is actually the National Minority Health Month and this timeframe is actually, that's not a coincidence either because it falls around International Day of Maternal Health and Rights. And so just give a shout out to all the proud mama bears out there who need to take care of themselves and need to be taken care of. The infant mortality rate in minorities is significantly alarmingly higher and it's something that we don't talk about a lot. And so I just want to shine a light on that with this opportunity to do so. And also to, just to shift gears to the city and our, our budgeting process, I just want to give kudos to our staff, to Melissa and her team. I, I also highlighted, I wrote a note down to talk about programs with our police department, with the, the SRO officer, the school resource officer, and programs like the co-responder programs. I hope that we do everything we can to keep expanding those type of programs because they do significantly have an impact on our community. Mayor Pro Tim Bliss talked about working with Madison and I recall some of the reasons why they did not want to have a, why they decided to table it, I don't want to say they didn't want to have it, but why they decided to table it. And it had to do with the relationships partly that some of those students have with officers already. And as a person of color, I can understand that completely. But I also understand that how having police officers in your life relationally can kind of help to turn that tide a little bit. And so, you know, I want to encourage our police and give kudos to our staff for continuing to develop those type of programs with the school resource officers with co-responders so we can keep growing those to bring our community together. Because those are like, those are the binders, those are like the mustard on your ribs. If you like ribs, mustard's the binder. It's like the things that, that bring it all together and make a community something special, which is what Madison Heights is. So as Bill said, remember to be kind and that's it for me.
Thank you. Anything from the city attorney's office tonight?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, a couple of comments. It's interesting that Counselor Wright mentioned Women's Maternal Health Week because my daughter actually did a story yesterday on WXYZ TV on that topic and it was very well received. Secondly, I don't think I mentioned it in the last council meeting, but I want to give my condolences to the family of Dolly Faris who passed away recently. She was a lovely person, very active in our community. She's the kind of person that, as I always say, makes Madison Heights great. And seeing her over the decades just would always bring a smile to your face. She was very upbeat and positive and, and she will be missed. Lastly, I want to wish council and their families happy holidays and all the best. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anything from the city manager's office tonight?
No, just thanks to council for all their support throughout the budget process. I think it went really well and we put forth the budget that continues our priorities to the best of our abilities, so that's it.
Thank you. I assume that we're going to talk about the upcoming election.
Yes, we are, thank you very much. I just wanted to let everybody know that early voting does start on Saturday, April 26th at the Royal Oaks Senior Center, which is 3500 Marius Boulevard. That is located north of 13 Marrow and west of Crooks. That'll be open daily from 8:30 to 4:30 through May 4th, with the exception of Thursday, May 1st, when we do have evening hours from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And if you still need an absentee ballot, those are available. And all precinct locations will be open on May 6th from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Not all, I'm sorry, only the precinct locations in Lambfair District will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
I dropped off my absentee ballot as well as my wife's in the drop box outside before this meeting, so. Very easy, please vote.
Yep, and you can, yes, you can utilize our secure camera drop box behind City Hall. And there's also a drop box over by the Silver Towers.
Amazing. Counselor Robach.
First, I just want to say again, echo the kudos to Linda Kunitz and Melissa Marsh and all the staff for budget. It's a monumental project and you guys always pull it off so beautifully, so thank you for your dedication to that. May 25th, Environmental Citizens Committee is hosting our native plant sale out here in the parking lot at City Hall of 2:00 to 5:00 PM. That's the Sunday before Memorial Day. And please come out, pick up your native plants for your native gardens and let's, let's help every, every household, every yard in the city be populated with as many native plants and pollinator friendly plants as possible. We will make a big difference. Those native plant sales fund the ECC's garden grant programs as well as other things. And the next round of garden grants have been submitted and reviewed by ECC and the grant announcements will come at the Madison Heights 5K on April 26th. So if you are a applicant for one of those grants, feel free to come out. We will be able to, we will celebrate your, your garden grant and then, you know, then you can go running or go run and then, then get your garden, one of those things. But it will be great and as part of our celebration for Arbor Day is to give out those garden grants and our, as part of our commitment to being a Tree City USA. And in, so in 2017, I, I looked at my husband and I said, for our 20th anniversary, you were taking me to Italy. And I just laid down the law there and three years later, we're actually doing it. Or not three years later, what is this? Seven years later, we're actually doing it. So our, my, my 20th wedding anniversary is this, this summer. And so in May, my husband and I will be traveling to Italy for a vacation. So I will be missing the May 12th meeting. And then I also have to miss the May 26th meeting because I will be away for work. So my apologies to all council, you guys are going to have to carry forward the, the May meetings without me. I know you all miss me very much, but I have confidence in all of you. And finally, just want to say happy Passover, happy Easter, and I hope everybody has a great week. Thank you.
Enjoy Italy and I, I hope, well, I'll be over there, I can make some motions then. Definitely rely on you. All right, Councilman Fleming, anything tonight?
Yeah, I have a few items tonight. First of all, I want to say thank you to all the hard work that our staff has put in for the budget. But also I want to say that I look forward to a lot of participation coming in the future from our residents to give their comments on, you know, trash pickup services, budget, you know, the budget itself and anything else that they want to comment to the council for. We have emails that you can email, you can send a, a letter, an email to the city manager or the city clerk and they'll read it at a meeting and you can show up to the meeting and voice any concern on any topic that you want. And I encourage everybody to participate so that us seven here at city council aren't making every decision based on our own opinions. And I think it's really important for participation in, in your local, you know, in your community and local government to work together. That's the first thing. Oakland County Nature Center, it's becoming that time where, you know, you might want to go to the nature center and walk there. It's getting warmer and last November, Oakland County had a millage that created the, the nature center is one of the parks, the Oakland County Parks and all the Oakland County Parks is now free for admittance. You don't have to get a permit at all. You can park there and not have to worry about getting a ticket or, or, or anything else like that. So they're completely free. You can make a visit to any Oakland County Park, including the, the nature center. Also coming up in May, there's going to be a spring food truck rally at the Civic Center Park that the Chamber and the Recreation Department is working on. That's from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM on May 17th. I think that's going to be a really great food truck rally, one of the, you know, and I think hopefully we'll have many more of them to come along with the, the programming that we're going to be having with concerts, concert series and Civic Center at the, the new amphitheater, the band shell. So that's one of the things I'm looking forward to. Also, this month, again, is Autistic Awareness Month. And so I'm asking that we hold, similar to the trash talk, a, a meeting for the residents to come and talk about what we can do to improve and make more inclusive for those with disabilities such as autism, that we, we can make some more programming choices for those residents and also work at maybe making our parks even more accessible for those residents. So if we could, you know, have a meeting in the future so we can draw those parents and individuals and, and who can voice their ideas and we could have like a brainstorming session of what we can do going forward in the future. Because I'm definitely not an expert in, in any of that. And then finally, yesterday, the meeting, our city council meeting was moved due to the Hindu holiday of Fashiki and also Passover. But we, we had a trash talk meeting that occurred yesterday. It was planned on, on the same date as the council meeting and it was not moved. I'm not sure why, so I'm asking, well, first of all, let me digress here, that the, that became very inclusive to us Jewish residents like myself and the mayor and any other Jewish resident, including other, other religions such as the, the Hindu community that had a holiday that same day. And so nobody could, if you were of one of those religions, you could not come to the meeting. So what I want to do, I wanted to like to see a report of why it is that we had a meeting on a date that we were just moved a meeting from to be inclusive for those resident, you know, the residents so they could actually see the council meeting, you know? So I'd like to just make sure that we're being consistent with the policies that we're changing to be more inclusive, to make sure that we don't make these mistakes in the future and, and whatnot, so that's what I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilman.
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, well, I, first, I, I do tend to agree. I think if council, council's directive was that there was no meeting on that day when we adopted the ca-, the calendar. So I'm curious to know why that happened. I'm sure there's a reasonable explanation, but I look forward to that report. I also want to highlight the, I guess, the, the fact with the student resource officer. If Madison doesn't want to do some sort of joint meeting, I, I know that there are, we'll say, there's a lot of emotions that I think factor into that decision and there's definitely some budgetary elements as well that they're dealing with. I'd be happy to go along with the chief to one of their meetings if they can give us an agenda item to be able to talk about it. But I want to make sure that we are consistently reaching out to them, even if it goes nowhere. I, I don't want to, I don't want us to be in a situation where we haven't given our best effort to get that student resource officer in Madison schools. And maybe it's education, maybe it's just simply being aware and being a part of the conversation. But, you know, I, I would offer my time, I'd be happy to come to their meeting if they can give us an agenda item or if they want to do a joint meeting with council, that would be excellent too. But any way that we can have that dialogue with them of how do we get this done? And maybe there's a phased approach that we can implement. But I, I would, I would love for us to be able to get that done because it is so impactful and it's been so helpful with the Lambfair School District. I want to make sure that we equally can implement that with the Madison School District. Speaking of Lambfair, my, my daughter was one of the young entrepreneurs at the Lesinger Craft Show. It was jam packed. You, you could barely walk through, through the hallways. It was so, so tight, so many vendors, so many people from the public. And so shout out to the, the, the folks who invited us at the last meeting, especially the adorable little girl who hit the gavel at the end of the meeting. Thank you for bringing that awareness out, the community heard you and they showed up. Speaking of the community hearing and showing up, if you have not yet heard about the One Short Night Broadway Dance Party that the Arts Board is doing to be able to raise money to bring more arts and cultural activities into our city, you know, please come out, this is Broadway themed with a hometown hero who's a Broadway choreographer that's coming back to town to be honored and will even teach a dance to the folks in attendance. So to your, I guess, for the five people that are watching right now, if you have somebody who loves Broadway, who's seen the, the movie Wicked like six times and can quote it, please send them the link to buy tickets, it's on the Arts Board Facebook page. And I believe that the city social media account has also shared it and put it out there. One thing I had written down, but I didn't bring up during the, the budget discussion that might be worth including in our outreach as we go into the full budget adoption is that the changeover when a new resident buys a house. You know, we talk about all these challenges for, for new home buyers, you know, why are, why are young folks unable to buy houses right now? There's so many reasons and rationales for that. But one thing that isn't discussed as much, and we were just talking about this before the meeting, our city manager was telling a group of high school students that before you buy a house, come into City Hall and check what the taxes are going to be because it refreshes when you buy a house. Which you would think it should be the reverse in a way, right? Like you shouldn't have infinitely higher taxes as a new home buyer buying your first home than the house directly next door. home than the house directly next door, but that's just the way that things work with the Headley Amendment that was passed, I think, in the, what, mid-'90s?
'94.
'94, yeah. And so, there's a huge impact on that, and I think there could be some really strong public awareness of how that works and how they can get that direct information of what those taxes will be when they purchase that house, because it is definite sticker shock, and there's a huge imbalance that, you know, one house next door could be paying $2,000 while the house that just moved in and just bought it next door to that is paying $7,000, and it's all because of that Headley. And so, you know, the person with $2,000 is not thinking necessarily that the taxes are too high, but that brand-new home buyer who just bought and is paying $7,000, they're drowning and they're struggling. And so, I think some education and awareness around that and anything that we can do to be able to educate and help encourage more new home buyers would be awesome. And I'd also like to float to the ECC. You're doing the plant grant on, with that, that run? Run with plants. Let's, let's see, can you, can you water the plant without losing some water, then you get the grant? I don't know, make the game show.
I don't run.
With that, the time is 9:19. I will adjourn this meeting, and we will be back on April 28th, our normal time, 7:30. See you there.